Good evening. Welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board Meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. And I think this is actually the largest crowd ever seen this. For a board meeting. No, that's something. Use. Want to thank everybody for being here. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent. As usual, if you're here in person at the end of meetings, we'll have a point for public comment. And if you're in the audience or viewing this after, but any time you can call the district office to talk to Mr. Brown, at 716-751-9399. At this time, I will turn the board meeting over to President Carroll.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Please stand and join me in the presence of Congress. White ladies.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Party's stance. Foundation under our community as well. But we're beginning to just start.
Item one B approved meeting minutes stated April 23rd, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Item two A, resolved into Wilson Central School District Board of Education, approved following items B through W in the financial consent agenda as submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Item three A, accept the resignation of Carly Lazonis, special education teacher effective August 31st, 2024. Now, motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Okay, we're gonna take our agenda here and just kind of set it aside for a moment or two. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Wilkie, come up first. And we have three of our Wilson teachers that we're going to recognize this evening for receiving tenure. And I'm gonna let Mr. Wilkie talk about the two elementary teachers, and then Mr. Benton's gonna talk about the Wilson teachers.
All right, thank you. So first, I'm gonna have Sarah Japica come up, please. All right, so Sarah is a secondary teacher for us at Wilson Elementary, and she does a fantastic job. One of her strongest attributes is her classroom management. Her kiddos are in such a great routine. She has super high expectations. She also sets a very firm and warm, well, classroom. She is very strong with her literacy. And just, and she's a great part of our building, a really good third culture, and trunks our kids. She's also super flexible and works really well with me because she's going to teach first grade for me next year. So I'm super thankful that for her. Love Sarah. She's doing a great job, and we're super lucky to have her at Wilson. Well deserved tenure her back in kindergarten. So, great job to Sarah Japica. And Dana Previs. So Dana is our school library. Dana is just a jackal for age. She's super skilled in not only library, but technology, they've estimated. I threw her a bit of a curveball. She really perfectly talked to her when it started. I completely changed her schedule. And, and she was awesome with it. She was super flexible, went with the flow. And she is a super busy person, and she just manages it all super well. The kids love going to the library. They learn a lot. So she always has great activities going on. She also does a great job of connecting what she does in the library with what the teacher's doing in the classroom. So we get that cross-perimeter connection. So Dana is just super impressive overall. Our library is in amazing shape next to Dana. So her tenure today is super conservative. So thank you, Dana.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Sir Fregerd, being page, sir.
Yes. All right, Ryan Fregerd is one of our middle school special ed teachers. He specializes in eighth grade and special education. He's doing a fantastic job. He's extremely organized, cares about his kids a great deal. Whenever I need something, I just go to my intended teachers, which is not gonna stop. One thing that I'd like to cry about here is getting married next November, opening weekend of honey season. Kind of put a damn around the weekend, right? But anyway, yeah, either support your family.
That's it for your invited.
I already got the big safety. And of course. Ryan, he runs our Sandy Sun Fun Run, which I have in, like, day before Memorial Day. He also runs our Turb Trac. He's a member of our shared decision-making team at the middle school. He's on the Wilson winner committee. Went to Washington DC with our regular seaters against the D. Cedar Point with our senior students of Ryan and his MVP. And I only hope that he lives there. Thank you, Ryan.
Ryan Otter, you might want to rethink that invite would be seen up here.
For a tenure appointment on recommendation of Timothy Carter, superintendent of schools, Ryan Fregerd is hereby appointed on tenure to the tenure area of special education. The tenure service shall begin September 1, 2024. The appointee is professionally certified in Wilson within the students with disabilities, grades seven through 12. Social studies, seven through 12. Social studies, grades five through nine, and English language arts. Special class limited extension certification areas. Can I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Congratulations. Item B, tenure appointment on recommendation of Timothy Carter, superintendent of schools, Dana Previs is hereby appointed on tenure to the tenure area of library media specialist. The tenure service shall begin on September 1, 2024. The appointee is professionally certified in area of media specialist. Certification area, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Congratulations.
We usually stop there and have cupcakes, but I think it makes more sense to keep going and do all our appointments that we can celebrate our tenure plus our appointments. Why don't we keep going? Do cake, we'll do cupcakes after the last. Okay, Mr. Wilkie, back up.
Christina. Okay, so we're super excited to reintroduce you to Christina Boyd. This year, she is teaching fifth grade specifically science for us, and she's doing a phenomenal job. She is a pro at differentiating her instructions from what your students needs. So whether it's adapting her known activities to read all her orders, to other instructions. Also, I've never seen someone put so much time and effort into science fair before I met her, she's avoided, just gave hours that she put in, maybe that's really she thought of them, was awesome. So it just shows her dedication, her passion for her students. And talking with her students, I've been able to look at best teacher appreciation this week, and they love this one. She's awesome, super helpful, and they love how fun her classes look. She's also a great teacher, very strong instructional. So this is well deserved data for being a way should a number of our team. Any questions?
Item C, Christine Boyd is elementary education teacher effective September 1, 2024. Christina is initially certified with early childhood education, birth through grade two, and childhood education grades one through six credentials. And is appointed to the tenure area of elementary education teacher at step two, D, B, with benefits per the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. The appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning retroactively on September 1, 2023, through September 1, 2027, for the first day of student attendance in September 2027. The probationary end date is contingent upon an individual receiving it. Overall APPR rating is effective or highly effective in least two of the three preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr. Benton?
There she is. I don't know if it's showing my A, but we're starting to hire more and more of our students. This one here is, has a special place in our sixth grade science a little years ago. This is Courtney Brown, former Wilson student. Graduated 2019 as well. Courtney, this recommended for her higher degree in science. She's certified in biology grades five through 12, chemistry seven through 12. She has all the knowledge she shares with all of our students. Courtney began teaching here as a student teacher last year, seventh grade science, scout corps. And she's also been fully at Williamsville East since her graduation from N U. Courtney's already a teacher, goes up in her, her lesson. And she brought in 12 kids, fifth age, lovely lesson. Classroom management is extremely evident already, and she has a lot of knowledge to share with who we are students. Also, she varied in technology too, so that's a plus as well. She's very, she's very sweet. And the verification goes through the board.
Item D, Courtney Brown is seven through 12 science teacher effective September 1, 2024. Courtney Brown is initially certified as biology grades five through nine and biology seven through 12, and is appointed to the tenure area of science at step one, C, B, with benefits per the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. This appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning September 1, 2024, through September 1, 2028, for the first day of student attendance in September 2028. The probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in these three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Wilkie? For the rest?
All right, so this is Kayla Rosler. She is currently a teacher at the Warner Fairing Center for one of those. She graduated from Virginia last May in child inclusive education. And she'll be graduating next August on the administrative degree from Buffalo State. A couple things real stood out about Kayla and her original lesson process. So first of all, she's in at Warner Fairing Center. She's teaching in a 12 month degree, some particular classroom. And as we're going to get our own 12 month programs up and running, she has experience in good math specifically. So she's really a very valuable asset for that. Also, what was super evident when we had her teach her lessons with students is her illegal relationships with kids. The kid has only 30 minutes to meet the kid, and she really took time to get to know them and their interests, and that really drew the kids to her. Super thoughtful lesson planner, and just her passion for education just shines through. And she's gonna be a really great addition to Wilson.
Item E, Kayla Rosler, a special education teacher effective September 1, 2024. Kayla Rosler is initially certified, students with disability, all grades, and is appointed to the tenure area of special education at step one, C, B, with the benefits per the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. This appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning September 1, 2024, through September 1, 2028, for first day of student attendance in September 2028. Probationary period end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Congratulations.
All right, next I have Elise Fent. So Elise is graduated, or a company is right, a company yet, from a head for university with her own child and special education degree. I actually met Elise earlier this school year. She was doing observation hours and teaching hours in our classroom. And right when I saw her interact there, I got excited as a attending person to come work in our building. She's great with kids. Then she came to teach her lesson course in every process. Even though she doesn't have full classroom experience teaching yet. Her lesson plan was more of a thoughtful detail, well planned lessons that I saw. So that really shined through. She answered the questions really well. She's a great fit for Wilson, and her love for the school really came through when she was answering the questions. And she's just overall a really great person, and I think we're excited to watch her lesson there teaching at Wilson.
Item M, Elise Kent, a special education teacher effective September 1, 2024, pending certification. Elise is appointed to the tenure area of special education at step one, C, B, with benefits per the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. This appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning September 1, 2024, through September 1, 2028, for first day of student attendance in September 2028. Probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
So Carly Lazonis could be with us here tonight, but you saw her presentation earlier in the board. So she is already special education teacher for us. She's taught at Wilson since 2016. And she showed us that her to move to the general education tenure area. And I think when you have a teacher with such a strong knowledge in special education, that means that they're really good at meeting the needs of all their learners, and they have good background knowledge on how to differentiate. So I think that's a strong asset they have, and a general education teacher too. So, and her every process and her lesson, we all talked about the committee how experience shows, right? And it means a lot, and she has a lot of it. And so we're excited to move her into a different fashion environment, few variables.
Thank you. Item G, Carly Lazonis is elementary education teacher effective September 1, 2028. Carly is professionally certified with early childhood education, birth through grade two, and childhood education grades one through six. credentials and appointment to the tenure area of elementary education teacher at step seven, one, B, six, zero, M, with benefits for the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. This appointment includes a three-year probationary period beginning September 1, 2024, through September 1, 2027, for first day of student attendance in September 2027. The probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in at least two of the three preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
All right, everyone, this is Maria. She is joining us after two years of teaching in Airborne Elementary. Can I go review? So when she came in for her interview, just her energy and her passion was so high, and it just made over smiling, so she really is that. And then when she came to teach her lesson with kids, the command and the confidence that she had just drew the kids in. And they were locked in, and they were focused, and she didn't have to, you know, flash any sirens or ring any bells, like the kids are stronger because of the energy that she brings to the way she teaches. So when we watched her teach, we had everyone else, and then we're super excited to have her here. She's going to be a great addition, Jason Murray.
Item H, Maria Marinaccio is elementary education teacher effective September 1, 2024. Maria is initially certified with childhood education grades one through six credentials, and is appointed to the tenure area of elementary education teacher at step one, C, B, with benefits for the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. This appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning September 1, 2024, through September 1, 2028, for the first day of student attendance in September 2028. Probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in the last, in at least three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receive an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at this time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
All right, so this is Caitlin Wailey. So I think you're doing something right, Caitlin, when you call the references. Peter, you're generally at least upset. If you, if you are stealing that for granted. And that's what happened with Caitlin. So she's currently teaching second grade in West Africa. And so she graduated in Jordan 2 from New Paltz with bachelor's for the childhood, childhood. And she's currently getting her master's after she's done with the grant. Actually, the next week she's done with a master's degree in literacy. So she has great background knowledge on education, and she has a very common demeanor when she was with the kids. But she had super strong classroom management skills, very thoughtful lesson planning, and that all came through in the lesson. And like I said, people couldn't say enough good things about her. And maybe right away after we, we met her, that she'd be a really great addition to the team. So, thank you.
Item M, Caitlin White, Whiteley. Is elementary education teacher effective September 1, 2024. Caitlin is initially certified with early childhood education, birth through grade two, and childhood education's grades one through six credentials. Is appointed to the tenure area of elementary education at step one, C, B, with benefits for the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. This appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning September 1, 2024, through September 1, 2028, for the first day of student attendance in September 2028. Probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating of effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Congratulations.
All right, and this is Madison. So she is also currently teaching there for elementary. She is a consulting teacher for her second grade. She will be graduating next year with her literacy instruction management degree. She graduated from Niagara with a bachelor's in fourth grade. She had really great energy at her interview, and it was awesome because we had her teach with fourth graders. And when she left, I had kids, they're all the way they belong to kids, and a fourth year, she had awesome energy. So even the kids can pick up on something like that. She's super talented with her lesson planning and her delivery. It's super engaging, all the details of her lessons were great. And she's gonna be a really, really good addition to our special education staff. So, that's Madison.
Item J, Madison Rasmun, a special education teacher effective September 1, 2024. Madison Rasmun is initially certified, students with disabilities grades one through six. And is appointed to the tenure area of special education at step one, C, B, with benefits per the Wilson Teachers Association agreement. The appointment includes a four-year probationary period beginning September 1, 2024, through September 1, 2028, for the first day of student attendance in September 2028. Probationary end date is contingent upon the individual receiving an overall APPR rating effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. Probationary employees receiving an ineffective APPR rating in their, in their final year of probation will not be eligible for tenure at that time. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Congratulations.
Time for cupcakes. I wasn't kidding. We can't start with the cupcakes, though.
Well, we're still at the hallway, we're gonna get back to the board meeting we were in here at midnight. If it gets too loud, we may have to shut the door.
Item 6A, resolve that the Wilson Central School District Board of Education for the following summer, 2024, hours for staff. Item speed through that. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item 7A, adopt the State Environmental Quality Review Act, seek resolution for the Wilson Central School District, 2024, 2025, capital well, in project. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item B, approve agreement between the Wilson Central School District and Susan Bell, who serves director, effective July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2028. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item C, approve the memorandum agreement between Wilson Central School District and the Wilson Teachers Association regarding the Learning Center Director Assignment and Saylor. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item D, approve the adoption and purchase of the Wonders curriculum for the elementary school. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item 7E, approve the non-instructional employee calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item E, policies. Policies, first reading no action. B. Item B, policies for adoption. Policies 1270 absentee military early male victims. Policy 3310, public access to records. Policy 5130, budget adoption. Policy 5140, administration of the budget policy. 5230, acceptance of gifts, grants, and requests to the school district. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item C, policies for deletion. Policy 5150, contingency plan. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item 9A, approve CPSC, CSC 504, meeting minutes and IED recommendations stated May 7, 2024. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item 10A, approve conference request for the May 7, 2024 agenda. Item speed through C. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Conference reports. Mr. Carter?
Yes, we'll start him with, and I think I told him today he didn't have to do it, but if he's available, I'll ask him, could you do your conference report? Because I guess I didn't read this one. Thank you, Mr. Roth. He is going to read the NYSA any conference report read by Mr. Roth.
Yeah, so March I got to attend the New York State Athletic Administrator Association State Conference. That's our athletic administrator group. It was a great conference, it always is, in addition to some of the meetings and some of the, you know, general speakers, like executive director Robert Dan and stuff like that, the state rules. I did pick up a few things. We learned, you know, some mentoring stuff that maybe I could do with a mentoring program with our coaches, furthering our A-We Could Save a Life program. That's a, that's a mandatory program that we've talked about before here at the board level, but that's going to be something that's mandatory as well. So doing a workshop on that is helpful. I did a workshop, a couple workshops with a gentleman named Rob Miller from Black Coaching. We talked about trade equality athletic programs, leadership, stuff like that, how to develop the character in an athlete. So all in all, it was a really good conference, and I want to thank you for allowing me to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Mr. Wilkie, you attended the navigating pre-K day 2024 conference.
Good. So let's be glad that we did attend a conference and all the books and best practices for universal pre-kindergarten. The event aimed to equip educators with insights into various methods of BPK, including inclusivity, early literacy, and financial strategies. One of the highlights of the conference was session dedicated to fostering specific UPK programs. Experts emphasized the importance of creating a welcoming and supportive environment for children with diverse backgrounds, including those with disabilities. Another significant aspect of the conference was the focus on early literacy development. Presenters shared evidence-based practices for promoting literacy skills among young learners, emphasizing the critical role of early exposure to language and literacy rich environments. The workshop of dominant techniques for incorporating storytelling, interactive reading, and creative awareness activities into UK for a more true A-Stron evaluation for future academic success. And then finally, I was able to meet one of our little liaison in front of the Office of Public Learning, who offered insights into the best practices for resource allocation and answered some questions I had that were specific to Wilson and the learning environment in Reddington. It was very rewarding, and thank you for an arm in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Catherine Henzel attended the SUNY Geneseo English Teacher Day Conference, and I'm going to put this in news and notes for our members, because if I read the dissertation back here, it'll... Got a lot of Catherine, she did her job.
Yes.
And always does. And it's quite, it's quite the read, but she has three takeaways on here. It sounds like they're all different breakout sessions. One's called For Us to Breathe, it focuses on working with Black 21st century poets, Native American literature, and creating a book for student delight. And they're different keynote speakers, and she goes on about how she's going to use them in her classroom and in their perspective. So I'll make sure that I add that part of news and notes, Mr. Saban, and we'll follow the word you read there.
Thank you.
Mr. Brett Sipple attended the local historical research to support your SEAL of Civic readiness workshop at the Buffalo and Erie County Public Library. The workshop consisted of several outstanding speakers and first members. This program was ideal as Wilson High School prepares to offer our students the opportunity to earn their SEAL of Civic readiness. I found each speaker helpful to generate ideas and resources to help pursue the SEAL. The speaker that I'm most interested in was Zach Finn. Zach is a research historian and grant reviewer at the Palmeroy Foundation. For over 10 years, I've done a unit with my students using local historical markers. We have even had students complete the steps in having a marker created for historical location in Wilson. Besides the SEAL of Civic readiness, I'm preparing for a group of students to go through the process of getting another historical marker created in Wilson. The process for this is done through the Palmeroy Foundation, having an opportunity to talk to Zach in preparation for this. It's extremely helpful. The opportunity in listening to representatives from several local historical resource organization was also very informative. Representatives from the UB, Buffalo Historical Museum, Niagara Historical Center went on hand to provide information on what their organization could help teachers facilitate research on local historical projects. Each organization had resources that I was unaware of, and look forward to utilizing these organizations and resources in the future. Overall, the program was excellent, and it was extremely informative and well worth my time. That was from Brett Sipple, the social studies teacher of seventh grade. And last one is from Nicole Tiffany West, U.S. History and Government teacher. Board members, over the course of the school year, I attended three conferences, Adam Bosse's focusing on New York State's SEAL of Civic readiness, for reference December 8th, February 13th, and the last one, April 26th. The SEAL is a program being ruled out and actively promoted through New York State to aid students in expressing civic knowledge and readiness. I am completely invested in offering it to our students and have begun efforts to do so in hopes that our graduating class of 2025 will have the extra designation on their book. Thank you and the district for their support and opportunity to attend this three-day informational conference. So the conference supports.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Item 12A, approve the junior class kiss the senior goodbye on regular from May 20th through the 30th, 2024, to sell orange lip cookies to be sent to a senior with a message. All proceeds will be used upon junior class activities. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item 13A, Wilson youth baseball softball request. The use of the high school play fields from May 15 through August 1, 2024, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for youth baseball softball. Uses as available for the athletic director. Wilson youth baseball softball will not use the fields during school practice or games. School events will always have a prayer. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item 14, field trips no action. Trustee Stewart isn't available today for reading of the post-but on the reports, and Emma's here. Superintendent Carter?
Thank you, board members. I got a couple of things, probably more than anyone here, but I'll do my best to get through them. First of all, I want to thank and welcome everybody here. First of all, I want to thank and welcome everybody here, at least those that remained, and thank and congratulate our new hires and our tenure appointments. This is always a great night for multiple reasons. Oh, our tenure. Award winners here. Thank you. I wanted to share a couple of things and then pass this around. This is a thank you card I received from Mrs. Myers' 12-1 class at the middle school. It's entitled to the board of ed, Mr. Carter and Mr. Benton. Our class had the best time on our bowling field trip. It was a new experience for most of our crew and we can't thank you enough for supporting your class. We made some great memories. And it says, "Thank you, Mrs. Myers and all the kids," and they took their pictures. I'll pass that around. Also, this past Sunday morning at 11 o'clock, Mr. Roth, Mr. Galbich, and myself, a couple of families, a bunch of coaches, attended the 57th Annual Tom Stewart Award Ceremony, which two of our student seniors were recognized, the female athlete, Hewitt Org. Winner was Kevin Gail Freakman. And the boy, Hewitt Org winner was Brayden Luch. And I have their picture and photo program. This past Monday, right after our wonderful meet the candidate night, at 7 o'clock in the evening, our talented art students put on an unbelievable show. It was great. Just some great talent in our district and it was awesome to see. It's probably the biggest picture there. I don't know why that happened, but it happened. It happened to be the largest 10th period, 8th grade class, I think, at the middle school. So just unbelievable. If you had a chance, opportunity, those artwork is going to be up through the end of the month. Our fourth and fifth grade regional spelling bee was this past weekend. So congratulations to the fourth grade winner from Wilson. It was a regional spelling bee. Many other schools involved was Kevin Gail Snyder. And congratulations to the fifth grade winner, also a Wilson student, Ava Barny. So great day. That's just awesome. Flag day is going to be June 14th, the usual ceremony, flags, parades, and all that stuff. End up at the high school, starts at the elementary school, end up at the front lawn of the high school. The band will play and the flags will wave. So looking forward to that. This Saturday is prom. Our music program went to Cedar Point, Cedar Point this past week. And brought home the hardware. It's in the front case. It was the front case earlier this week, so hopefully it's still there. If you see it on the way up, please congratulate Mrs. Burkman, Mrs. Andres, and all of our students for that. What a great honor. And, you know, I want to mention this because we really haven't had it out for any public conversation. We've had it at workshops and in committee. There were some questions at the beginning of the year, specifically around tax time, around our tax process and the banking which we use. And the board of the district has done quite a bit of research on this. And, you know, we kind of landed at our last work workshop on staying with MNT for, I don't know, three reasons, but with three contingents. One, MNT board members, if you remember, is going to put a drop box up front of the door Z to the district office, was by the district office for anybody to do a drop box. And then also, we're going to provide at least two opportunities for taxpayers to come up and walk up and do that walk-up service. If anybody wishes to do that, and we'll advertise that in the community. I can do that through the newspaper. We'll advertise. They did it in time and location. As you remember, there was a number of reasons why we stayed with the MNT. And one of it do with just a number of, you know, investments that we do have with MNT and the trade-off of what the fees would be. But also, and I think the real big reason is that MNT has the program that we have. We use for tax purposes where Bank of Buffalo, that was a totally different program. So we would have to do double work in order to program that in here in our district. And that's something we weren't necessarily willing to do at this point. So it's not that Bank of Buffalo, their service wasn't a good service. It just doesn't meet necessarily our needs and what we're doing here at school. So as a, you know, just to make sure that we continue to, you know, put that service out to the community. We will have the drop box and we'll have a couple of opportunities, at least two opportunities, for the local community to walk up and turn their tax to the tax collector here in district. And again, we'll have those day opportunities out there. Board members, any questions for me?
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Like to again echo what you said, welcome to those new hires. And to, and congratulations to the teachers that have received their tenure tonight. We're really excited to talk to the new folks coming forward, so. Again, thank you, Mrs. Oliveri, for all your work on the budget and your presentation tonight. And again, anybody that showed up for last night's candidate forum, thank you. Thank you for your support. And we're looking forward to the budget vote coming up shortly. So meeting before next budget vote, so please get out and vote. Encourage your family members to get out and vote and support this budget. So at this point, we've reached the public forum. This portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for residents of the Wilson Central School District to be heard. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriated in this forum and will not be allowed. The board may not respond to questions. They should be referred to the superintendent of schools at another time. Please be respectful and let me draw comments in three minutes.
Thank you for pointing out those other women in the background. My thank you for not choosing Bank of Buffalo. I'm not happy about that. But I appreciate the people who run the committee to help with things. I'll be back next year. Now, the time we can put them in the drop box. Central office is going to be here or is it going to be at the school itself?
It'll, I'm not sure what parking lot you parked in, but it will be, you know where door Z is? Above it says district office. Right at the end of the stall. It'll be right there. That's where we're planning for it to go.
It'll only be certain days?
No, it'll be consistent drop, a drop box. You know, you're only one way in, no way out. That box will be there. It'll be permanent and it'll be checked every day. We won't be opening it. It'll be couriered by an armed carrier to the bank.
Every day?
Every day. When you get, yes. Two days, you can actually come in person and make the payments as well. Yeah, two of the days will have a walk-up service. We'll have an actual person to do it. We'll, we'll publicize those during, when we get closer to tax. We're taking the old central office where the house is. We'll have, you know, where one of our employees is there, a couple of employees here. To be able to, because some people still want to bring it in. If they want to bring it in, they can get their receipt, standard receipt. Yeah, something standard receipt.
I got my account and what the hell is going on?
I get it. So we're going to do our best to try and at least meet that part. But like I said, just based upon a lot of the numbers we started working around, it just made more sense to stay with where we're at. And more importantly, we didn't want to, you know, we couldn't change the program we're using. And the program that Bank of Buffalo, the company that they use, it's not Bank of Buffalo. They firm it out through a company in Rochester. The tax process program they use and the one we use are not the same. So we would have to do some work on our end and our office is big enough to take care of that. But we'll keep it in mind for future.
We'll be there because I've had six great people that have talked to me in the last couple of weeks wanting to know, did it happen to you?
And please give them my number, because I'd be glad to have a conversation with them, chat with them about what we are going to be able to do. But unfortunately, that right now is just not feasible.
Not a standby.
Thank you.
And you can always call me, get me an out of your receipt. I think I did mail you a receipt, didn't I, just here? Didn't I mail you a receipt? Didn't you call and ask me to mail you a receipt? And I did.
That's the issue anymore. I'll go to the farm over to the ones that play. You know.
Thanks for seeing no other people coming forward. No need for executive session tonight. Can I have a motion for it? Second? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion here.